Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before our meeting begins tonight, we'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Poole, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed on our community. We are here today to continue deciding for the safety and well-being of our citizen. Guide us in our decisions. All is possible in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Lockhart.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Ms. Lloyd.
Here.
Ms. Twine.
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of June 24, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm going to accept the minutes of the June 24 meeting in dispense to the formal reading.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing, no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audiate participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our regular agenda items tonight, please step to the microphone, give us your name and your address. And bear in mind, for those who are visiting, or new visitors, this portion of the comments are limited to three minutes, please.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'd like to comment on the Renaissance II LLC. They're receiving a grant tonight of $102,000, a development grant, and a beautification grant for $22,005. There seems to be some kind of discrepancy here in what the agenda states here and what the internal documents state. Now, I know some, and I'm not saying there's commissioners here or whatever, I'm not saying that, but they're having the past. Some commissioners do not crack open their pack, okay? So they would just go with what's on the agenda. The agenda states here that he does not get any of the grant money until the job is completed, okay? Now, when you look in the internal documents, the contract itself, it states that he will get 50% halfway through the job. And then the other 50% of the grant, they'll get when the job is finished and certified. I know we have done some things like this in the past, but I'm concerned about giving developers money upfront or even halfway through. The grant should only be for when you complete the job, because we are looking at the Cook Building, and there might be a walk away from that development. If we had any money in that, we may lose it. So I'm not here to protect the developer. We should be protecting the taxpayer. So that's what I have to say on that. And this is especially, I'm concerned, when a building is condemned and a developer wants to renovate it and his background for that. This one has been condemned at 131 East Water Street. The tax abatement is for 10 years at 75%. You get an A from me on that, because I do not like tax abatements at 30 years at 100%. That's ridiculous. So if you can even cut that down, I'd be happy to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Rick Scheel, 4520 Callaway Road, Sandusky, Ohio. Question, I'm going to put these items together, 3, 4, 5, and 6. I have three questions. We see we're going to give a $22,500 grant, a $102,500 grant, which is $125,000 in total cash grants to this development. And also, we're going to give a tax abatement for 10 years. I was wondering, one of three questions, what is the total value of this grant project, including the abatements, the 10-year abatements? The second question, two of the sitting commissioners are within eyeball reach of the development. Will they be abstaining from this vote? And third, having reviewed the Section 14 clause in the city charter, I'm wondering how this constitutes an emergency? Shouldn't this be read more than once? Thank you.
Thank you, Scheel. Anyone else?
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Commissioners, Staff. Good evening. The questions I had tonight was, again, on 3, 4, and 5. Simple question. I drove by the property over the weekend, and the property is condemned. So once we get to that point, maybe Mr. Laskill can explain for future reference, if, you know, say a homeowner has a property that's been condemned, can they also get money from the city for beautification, or, you know, any other kind of work, or any other business, or any other commercial venture, as far as that goes, if it's been condemned? Can we apply for money and do repairs? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Anyone else present wishing to address the Commission on any of our regular business items? If not, then we have a presentation about something that is kind of a sleeper project here on Sandusky Bay. It's received some media attention, but I talked with a number of folks who I thought would be aware of what's going on, and this is the Sandusky Bay Restoration Initiative. It's a massive project. It is attracting a lot of statewide support. The governor's been interested in this. The legislature's been very interested in this, included some funds. And some legislation recently passed, not specifically targeted for, or earmarked for the projects that are considered in Sandusky Bay, but there is a strong probability, it seems, that some of those funds might be applied. As you know, we have been experiencing some very difficult challenges in terms of the algal blooms, both in Lake Erie and in Sandusky Bay. The ones in Sandusky Bay are different. They are biologically different. They pose their own challenges. And some of the steps that are being proposed in the Sandusky Bay are just enormous engineering projects that could have equally enormous impacts on our region, both in terms of the quality of the water, quality of life, and our economy, not to say the least, since we are so dependent upon visitors who come here, and we all enjoy the resources, the natural resources that we have here. So I see a couple of familiar faces in the audience, who I understand are here to make this presentation, or perhaps in support of that. My understanding is that Tim Denbo with Biohabitats is here to make a presentation. Mr. Denbo, if I'm pronouncing your name, I hope I pronounced your name properly. If not, Tom, okay, thank you. If you might step to the podium and give us whatever presentation you have, we'd be welcome to hear what you have to tell us.
Let's see, it's on the screen here. How do I get it on there?
Here, it's coming.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for inviting me to be here, and it's a pleasure to speak to you, the Commissioners of the City of Sandusky. And I've grown up south of here in Ashland, Ohio, and certainly am well-familiar with this place, have been coming here since I've been a kid. So over the last couple of years, Aaron Klein, who is ultimately our client, the City of Sandusky contracted with Biohabitats to complete a study with the goal of coming up with a strategic restoration plan for Sandusky Bay. And what I'm going to do tonight is take you through a high-level overview of, of course, what's the purpose of the project, talk about some of the problems that are being experienced, and you did a good job of summarizing those. What are the restoration strategies that we're looking at to transform the bay? And then we have identified a number of what we call Tier One projects. These are the projects that'll be, most likely, go first. They require some additional engineering studies. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the benefits that will happen to you. Certainly, you're familiar with the bay. You'll see a couple of different terms in here. Sometimes we refer to it as the Western Sandusky Bay, Eastern Sandusky Bay, and East Sandusky Bay. Of course, East Sandusky Bay is Putnam Marsh area, where the Erie Metro Parks are. You're off of the Eastern Sandusky Bay, and then, of course, the Western is when you go to the bridge in that area. You'll also hear a term referred to here as upper or lower part, and you'll see that. Just real quickly, the bay problems are really varied, and go back really to turbidity, which is caused for a couple of reasons we'll talk about. And a consequence of that is the hazardous algal blooms with the nutrients. Hardened shoreline, used to have a softer shoreline, and plants in nearshore habitat plays an important role. Of course, high water levels, which you're experiencing. Invasive plants, phragmides, that tall reed that you see everywhere, has come in everywhere. Herbivory just refers to things like carp and that type of thing that can feed on aquatic plants. And then land use, water activities, and hydrologic modifications. And of course, the key reason really we're doing this, and the whole reason the Sandusky Bay Initiative was started, was really because of this, the planktothrix. It's kind of the canary. And what makes it unique here, and you've heard of the other species in the Western part, is the turbidity. This particular species does very well in high turbid environment, and what you have in Sandusky Bay is a very unique condition, where there are sediments there that constantly get re-churned. And what happens is, it's able to outcompete other species of algae. And then it also contributes to the problems on the nutrients in the sediments, as well as the nutrients coming in on Sandusky Bay. That's a picture of that critter to the right up there, if you're wondering what it looked like. So because of these issues, then, with ODNR, this Sandusky Bay Initiative was started, gosh, two, two and a half years ago, to really have a very proactive approach of how can we begin to fix these problems, given the importance of the bay to the economy, to the health of the community, and why people really live here in this area. And there were several components that came out of this that have been very active, and investments that have been made, including a study to look at the nutrient sources in the bay. The City of Sandusky stepped up and did a couple of very critical projects, including this beneficial reuse of dredged sediments, trying to use it in a way that will help solve the problem. There's also ongoing work being done by researchers to fully understand what's happening in the bay. The Nature Conservancy has had a very important project that they're doing in the far into the bay called Muddy Creek Area. And then finally, this plan, which was part of that. Now, had this animation worked, what we did is, we started doing a lot of work to understand, bring all these studies together. And one of these was a lot of modeling that's been done by another firm called Tetra Tech. And if I could get this work, but we tried it and it doesn't, you'd see an orange blob coming from the left, going to the right, but almost never getting out into the lake. It's staying in the bay area, which is one of the interesting findings. It does tend to go out on occasions, as this drawing shows here. And I know this is probably a little hard for you to understand if you don't look at a lot of stuff like this. Those red arrows basically show the direction of the nutrients. They're coming from left to right. You'll also know the numbers are larger the further west you get in the bay. And then a lot of that material, which is in fine silts and sediments, is settling in the Western Bay or the upper part of the bay. You still get some, in this particular, and this is just from one year, there are some years where it shows it's not actually getting into Lake Erie, it stays in the bay. But that's what makes this so unique. And surprisingly, the bridge, the Sandusky Bay Bridge, does influence some of that back and forth of the material in there. And that's pretty significant in terms of our recommendations. The other thing is that this is an interesting drawing, because you ask the question, well, where's it coming from? And one of the things this strategic initiative has really determined for the years they modeled is, the green color represents the largest, you know, area you'll see in that graph, and that is Sandusky River itself. The second highest load or area source is interesting, is the blue, if you look across there. And what that means is, it's coming from the material that's in the sediments that get deposited there. And that happens when you get a lot of the sediment churning up in the bay. And then the other sources are lesser amounts, which includes the small tributaries. These are small areas of land that draw into a common point or a watershed. And there's many of these smaller ones besides the Sandusky watershed that are contributing, but on a smaller scale. But it varies year to year, depending on rainfall, that's a key factor, and other factors in the bay, so it's variable. And these are years where we had higher, and the smallest in there actually is point sources. So that's that little thin purple line you see there. Point sources are like, I guess you probably had a lot of discussion about your combined sewer overflows, or for pipes, whereas the other comes from what we call non-point pollution, or very broadly spread kinds of pollution that comes off when it rains. So those are very different sources of the pollutants. Also, the bay is really unique. It's one of the most unique places in the Great Lakes, partly because you have a lot of really existing wetland resources in the bay. Part of it's associated with the dyke areas. And some of these dyke areas, when we first came in, we didn't think we're providing some benefits, but we're learning that already some of the water that comes through these areas goes through those wetlands, and wetlands do provide a lot of benefits, where they filter and store the nutrients and retain them. So some of the landscape is already going through, other parts are not, and that'll be relevant in a second. So as a result of our work, this Sandusky Bay strategic plan, we decided there's really three major categories of things we would recommend need to be done. One is large-scale physical transformation. And that's needed because of the changes that have occurred, and I'll give you an example of what that is. The second is, let's make use of the existing wetlands that are there. It's already available. And are there things that we can do to modify and enhance that, to filter and store the nutrients, and actually provide cleaner water into the bay and help with the problem? And then what we call a nearshore functional improvement strategy, where we build features that help to filter the water, improve it, and clean it. So those are the kind of three classes of projects that we came up with. You can't read this, but basically, we screened the whole bay for a number of factors, and out of that, we identified three tiers of projects. Tier Ones, which I'm going to talk about now. There are other projects that may be possible in future years, but we think these Tier Ones are the priority projects that will have the most benefit out of the gate. And what are these projects? There's different things. What we call living shoreline or wetlands, these are all things that we're learning really benefit. This map shows all the sites we looked at as a part of this project. They're scattered all over. And although the majority ended up being in the Western, partly because of what we talked about earlier, a lot of the nutrient issues are occurring in that area. That's where they get started. Ultimately, after a lot of work, we've come up with these suite of projects that we're recommending that be implemented, or the Tier Ones. They're not necessarily in the order they're going to happen, it's just the way I put them on the slide. You probably are familiar with Projects 3 and 4 up there. Project 3 is that Cedar Point Causeway Beneficial Use Sediment Project that I think you're working on. 4 is in the Back Bay or in the Putnam Marsh area, would be potentially part of the trail project in that area. I'm not going to go into detail on that today, because I presented to you previously on those two projects, and there's probably been other discussions of those. The remainder of the projects, number 5, is Standing Rush, and that's a privately-owned dike area, but they are interested in conservation and helping the bay using their existing wetland features. Area 6 is really part of Willow Point Wildlife Refuge area or area. And I'll have a little bit brief picture of each of these. 7 and 8 is off of the Pickrell Creek, a dyke wetland or wildlife area. 9 is what we're calling Raccoon Creek. 2 is what we're calling the Island or Back Bay or Western Island Project. And that's what we're referring to as transformational as a potential project. And we'll talk briefly about that, oh, I'm sorry. And the other one is, one, a lot of work that could be done in Muddy Creek Bay. We don't have a lot of time to go into why that is today, because it would take much longer, but those are the projects. And the projects are all designed to do, number one, reduce the amount of energy, wave energy. So what happens is, when you get a lot of waves, it keeps sloshing around in there, riles up all that sediment, and makes the water look that turbid color, and that's what's contributing a major factor to the planktothrix or algae. So we're looking for projects that can reduce that energy in the bay. We're also looking at systems that would create edge area with wetlands and plants, or trap to get what we have up there nutrients, to actually absorb and suck up the nutrients. So you'll see that we have a range there of amount of nutrients. By building these systems, we know that they can help benefit and reduce the pollution in the area. So those are the major benefits. We're looking for actually three, but one is reduce sediment resuspension from the energy, two, improve water clarity, and then three, actually create habitat, which would help with the fishing and other things. These are the different projects that we're looking at. It's a little hard probably to see, but these are different kinds of nearshore projects, or projects on the near land, that would again enhance filtering of the water and cleaning it up. The particular, probably the largest of the projects is this Western Sandusky Bay Island Project. And I want you to pay attention to the figure to the left. You can see what this is, is a model where, when you have winds coming, like you do today, quite frankly, that's causing some of your local flooding, that water just shoots right back up into Muddy Creek Bay and roils up all that sediment and moves it around. And the idea is, over several years, is to potentially create a series of islands. And the dark blue is a visual to show you how much the energy will be reduced, and reduce the amount of sediment. So the idea is, by a combination of reducing that, we also settle out the sediment. We can also then, over time, allow plant community to establish on those areas because of the biological benefits that they would pay for that area. And the other two drawings are just different configurations of how those particular islands would work in the Western Bay Islands, we call them. Now, the way we look at this is, again, these are just typical examples of what these would look like. So if you look on the upper left, you'll see passive and active. And passive, we offered a couple of different strategies. The passive is a little lower cost to implement, but it'll likely mean it'll take longer for the benefits to happen. That would be the nutrient cleaning benefit. The active would be where you'd be a lot more active when you engineer it and build it, but, and so there'll have to be some further explorations of that. The middle drawing up there is actually from Europe, and an example there where they built, they have these dikes, they actually put pathways on them, and then built these sort of wetland areas in front of them. And that's kind of an example, in a rough way, of what we would be proposing. And some of the other cross figures are different views of what this living shoreline, when you're building the opportunity to grow plant material. The bottom second to the last figure is probably something like what the islands would look like. And that's an example from a project that's already been done in the Great Lakes, up in the Green Bay area. So those are different ways that we can engineer these structures to do that. So I would just conclude that, number one, since we've done this strategic, the Sandusky Bay Initiative, we have a much better understanding of the problems than we did two years ago. So that's a really important bottom line from the investment that has been made. We are recommending nine projects for implementation that will address what we talked about. There will be both public and private restoration funds required, but we know that potentially the H2 Ohio Fund, as well as funding from the Great Lakes Initiative, will be available to potentially implement these. The actual implementation will probably take place over multiple years. We've yet to decide which project would go first. I think there's some additional study that would be required. So the concepts you saw today will likely change, just because whoever is involved will have to do more engineering work. But that's an overview of the strategic restoration. It's geared towards really those three factors of helping to solve the problems we talked about earlier, and really will be a benefit in terms of really the safety, health, and welfare, and really the economics for the region. Any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Denbo. Commissioners, questions or comments? I know Aaron Klein and his team have been great partners in this process, and we appreciate the opportunity the state has afforded the city to really be in charge of much of its own destiny here, or to be in partnership with the state. I know Scott R. Mackey is back there from the ODNR, and we appreciate very much the partnership that you have extended with the city. It took us, I think it's fair to say, just a couple of things. One, it took our ecology, our environment, a long time to get to the point where we are today. This is not a problem that started yesterday, or last decade, or even a couple decades ago. This has been going on for a long period of time. It's going to take a long time to correct that problem, but it's important that we do that. And it's going to require follow-through on the part of the state and the city for many years to come. And just in case there's some folks who looked at the islands that you saw there, my understanding is that navigation will be maintained throughout this, and it's not going to impede anyone's ability to go fishing or enjoy the bay the way that they do today. And in fact, likely to create a lot of additional fishing habitat, which would only be only so much better, so.
Yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Long-term project over 10 years, how soon, what are we going to see happen first? And how soon can we expect to get started? What kinds of things will start at first?
My name's Scott R. Mackey. I'm the Chief of the Office of Coastal Management at the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And we provided state funding for a lot of the work that's being done here. And as I say, the City of Sandusky's been an excellent partner. Aaron's a great guy to work with here. In terms of starting the projects, the Cedar Point Causeway Project will probably be initiated within a year. We're going through a permitting process right now. That'll be a wetland beneficial use of material and a wetland restoration just west of Cedar Point Causeway. We talked about the H2 Ohio Funds. We have to wait to see what the legislature's going to do, as we're on an interim budget right now. But once it's finalized, there are substantial resources that will become available. And we have identified four or five of these projects to start now in terms of engineering and design work. So in answer to your question, we would be looking at some activities starting within a year. You may see some smaller projects along the shoreline, connecting up some of these smaller wetland complexes within six to eight months. But this is a long-term commitment, as Mr. Murray pointed out. It took us many years to get where we are. It's going to take us a number of years to get back. But I'd say within two to three years, we're going to start to see some major changes in the bay as a result of the investments that we're making.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Denbo, kind of a question for you, and Mr. Mackey. Is there anything about this that's controversial? It sounds like it's a win-win-win for everyone, win for the environment, win for the citizens, win for everyone. Where is there, I mean, you need a lift up, or is there controversy here? What is there?
I think, you know, we're just in the process of rolling this out, but we really have had a lot of involvement with a lot of stakeholders and partners to get to this point, and so who've had a chance to look at this and give us feedback along the way. And I think we have a really strong agreement between the researchers and the leadership around the direction that needs to go. So purposely, when we did a lot of the screening work, we tried to, we felt, because we really wanted early wins, you know, we call it in our business. We tried to get them in locations that we felt would be absolutely supportive of the projects moving forward. So in particular, that's why some of these projects are near state-owned lands, the water itself, it wouldn't alter the work, you know, the folks who enjoy duck hunting or, you know, hunting, it wouldn't impact those. So they're all designed to do, you know, avoid and really be things that would be early wins.
Thank you. I'm thrilled that you've partnered with our engineering department. I know they are very responsive to these kind of issues, and our engineer, Aaron Klein, is very responsive to environmental issues. So I'm thrilled that you've chosen us, and hopefully, we can continue to support this project.
Additional questions or comments? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for your leadership on this, because this is obviously something you supported a couple of years ago, and it was without your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on a proposed vacation of a 20-foot alley between 1643 and 1649 Cleveland Road. Here to start us off on that discussion is Greg Volz, City Planner. Volz.
Thank you, Commissioner President Murray. As mentioned, this is for an alley vacation petition for 1643 to 1649 Cleveland Road. It is located between Cleveland Road, Roosevelt It is located between Cleveland Road, Roosevelt, and Larchmont Streets, and all adjacent property owners have signed off on the petition. The main petition that brought it to us is just looking to create a more developable parcel, so that I'll leave it open to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments for Mr. Volz, or comments about the proposed vacation? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak on this proposed vacation, please step to the microphone, share with us your thoughts or questions. Seeing no one move forward, this hearing is then concluded. Commissioners, we have a number of pieces of, communications, excuse me, from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion, and second, any discussion? If not, without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing, no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, I've got to get used to where you are in this new room. Mr. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number one is an ordinance vacating a portion of an alley located north of Cleveland Road between 1643 and 1649 Cleveland Road, and between 1649 Cleveland Road and lots 118 to 121 on South Larchmont Drive within the city, as set forth on the vacation plat, a copy of which is marked Exhibit A2, attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein. This is a first reading.
Thank you. The information that's on the screen is incorrect, appurtenance to the last meeting, so I think we just got our wires crossed there. Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just one thing, I'm glad to see that we're going to vacate this alley. We have, I think in the future, the private sector taking over alleys that we aren't using is going to be the best thing for the community, things that we're, we have alleys that we're not using, we're only maintaining, and having private sector step up to put it to use is good for us.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the legislation, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Klein.
Yes.
That passes on first reading. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance declaring that certain real property acquired through the city's land reutilization program and owned by the city, identified as parcel number 58-00805, located at 1215 Central Avenue, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to proceed with a request for proposals processed for sale of the property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
And Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance approving a grant in the amount of $22,500 through the Housing Development and Beautification Grant Program to Renaissance II LLC in relation to the property located at 131 East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Story, I see you there, sir, and I don't know if you'll be presenting on this, or Mr. Lasco, or who will be presenting, but we have several related pieces of legislation, and so I thought maybe I'd give either or both of you gentlemen an opportunity to present this.
Yes, through you, Mr. President, to members of the commission. Ultimately, going to turn things over to John, who does have a presentation. I'll apologize, we're just finding out that last meeting's items are on the screen and not our presentation, so Stu will have that shortly. But I do want to mention what John is going to present will both cover the Economic Development Incentive Committee recommendation for the ED component of the grant, but then he'll also touch on the housing component of the grant, which was approved by Ms. Eversole within the Community Development Department. And then there's also two other related pieces of legislation which are related to the enterprise zone tax abatements. Those will not be directly covered within the presentation. We're certainly happy to take those up individually or after the presentation. Very typical in terms of what's being proposed from an incentive standpoint, but we're happy to answer direct questions as it relates to minimum investment required and jobs created. And then I did want to address, I believe it was Mr. Schwanger's question, about the ability of property owners with condemned properties to apply for, whether it be our ED programs or our housing programs. Although I won't say that we give them preference, we certainly encourage folks that have condemned properties or properties with code violations to apply. That does not make you ineligible. Our requirement is that you bring properties up to code and come fully into compliance, even if our funding is only assisting with a small portion of what may be necessary. So as we've become more aggressive in our code enforcement throughout the city, we wanted to provide some level of financial incentive to folks to help offset some of those costs that they may encounter. So with that, I'm happy to turn things over to John, either without presentation or if we wanted to wait on Stu to bring that item in. I don't know if he's got it now.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
While I'm putting it together, there were several questions that Mrs. Johnson had. I don't know if anybody would be able to respond to those right now.
I certainly can. Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Twine. Certainly within the staff's communication to the commission and the law department, and the actual grant agreement itself, does actually stipulate and call for there to be a 50% dispersment of the total grant amount, just related to ED grant amount. The housing amount will fully come at the end of the project, but the grant agreement does call for and recommend, as also recommended by the EDIC committee, to do 50% dispersment upon 50% completion of the project. Although we don't want to say that past projects have set a precedent, we believe that each project should be individually assessed. There have been projects where we've allowed certain dollars to go out the door prior to construction. Certainly, the majority have required funds to come out the door at the end of construction, so there's no one-size-fits-all model or recommendation. This was both based on the request of the applicant, but also we believed getting some cash into the middle of the project, where we've already going to, we're going to realize a half a million dollar investment before those $50,000 would be dispersed. At that point, we know that we'll have a salvaged building that didn't have to face the wrecking ball, which would be a six-figure demolition cost on that. So without question, to provide clarity, the grant does stipulate 50% of the ED grant dispersed at 50% completion of the project.
Were there any other questions, Ms. Twine?
She did also mention the total value. You already talked about that. And then how's this a Section 14 issue? I think that can be answered after you do your presentation, and as the commissioners have more discussion about that.
Mr. Story, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. President? This better be good, right? There we are. This presentation, to be brief, it's Renaissance II LLC as it relates to 131 East Water Street, more historically known as the Whedon Reber Building, that we refer to throughout this presentation. Renaissance II LLC was organized with the Ohio Secretary of State in 2017 to redevelop 125 East Water Street, which is otherwise known as the Bimiller Building. Members of Renaissance II include Robert Hare, who's in the room, Benjamin Mersick, Paul Blainbach, Caesar Avalone, and Brian Casper. This is another piece in the domino of development that Renaissance II has done to the 100 and 200 blocks of downtown Sandusky, as you can see from the lineage of projects here. This is just another in the line of successful development. This project itself, I don't think, you can tell the story without the storm that happened a year ago, which I know all of you are acutely aware of. It was in the aftermath of the cleanup of that storm, and determining if 125 of the Bimiller Building was viable and could be salvaged, that the management learned that the 131 building was also available. They closed on that deal earlier this year, and it was with the coupling of those two projects, they realized that the scale could permit joint development of each building. As you'll see, the Bimiller Building is a 7,500 square foot, first and second floor commercial lease out, which will be to the tenant Lake Erie Shores and Islands, and there'll be two residential units upon the third floor. The Whedon Reber Building will be essentially the same with a 1,500 square foot penthouse atop for three residential units in total. The building is being built out as a white box, the Whedon Reber. Upon acquiring the Whedon Reber, the cleanup began of the core structure. The demolition of all existing interior floor structures took place, the installation of two masonry regress stairways and elevator shafts, which will be shared with the 125 building, the addition of a penthouse residential level, installation of two garage doors along Shoreline Drive, which will lead to underground indoor parking for residents, and a new roof. Here's some pictures, which will tell the story more than anything else. That's approximately one year ago today. The fact that these buildings are capable of being saved, to me, is a miracle. That's the famous scene from outside, from the west face, and that's the inside of the Bimiller. These are the drawings of the elevation from a south viewpoint. As you'll note, to the 131 building to the right, the residential penthouse level is being built, and it stands a little bit above the 125 altitude. That's from the north face, the two garage doors, also on the 131 building for the residents. And if there's any other specific questions to that, I'm sure Mr. Hare will be able to answer that. The request tonight is for $102,500. The purpose is to fund the repair from the storm, to improve the facade of the masonry, to build out the interior, to provide new utility services, and to improve the infrastructure, which includes, as we mentioned before, the stairwells, the elevator, the HVAC, the electrical, the plumbing, the sprinklers. From those pictures, I think you can understand why. The Bimiller Building previously received $90,000 in substantial development, economic development grant from the city. This requested grant amount represents approximately 10% of the overall project cost, which is consistent with past projects of this magnitude. As mentioned before, this building, the 131, the Whedon Reber, will consist of three new presidential, presidential, three new residential units, two on the third floor, one in the penthouse level. The grant request is for $22,500, which was, which would be 7,500 per unit multiplied by the three, and the Bimiller Building below that was granted $15,000 for its two residential units. Here's the sources and uses for this project. It is $1.21 million. The breakdown on that, by the way, I think this is important to note, on the city ED side of that equation, it's right around 8%, and the city residential grant is about 1.7%. It literally comes out to exactly almost 10%. This project was brought before our committee on June 11th. It was unanimously approved. Project's to commence this month and to be completed within 18 months.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Did that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you might want to stay there. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chairman, would you go back to the north face drawing? Waiting for it to come up on my, there it is. What we see there that's been approved by planning and/or landmark, those are, this is the drawing that they approved?
Yes, I believe so.
This is, yes. Okay, thank you. Another question. You talked about previous awards for these, for one of the buildings, it's essentially, you said, a sick of mind project. So we're doing 100, you want 102 now, and you had 130 already, plus tax abatement, is that correct? Do I misunderstand this?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. We just wanted to remind the commission and the public that although the grant requests are specific to 131 East Water, the project at 125 East Water, where Lake Erie Shores and Islands will tenant the space, did come before commission last year around springtime, and was awarded a $90,000 ED grant and a $15,000 housing grant. So those have already been approved. We just wanted to acknowledge, because they're related parties, but we view these as completely separate buildings. Had the applicants been different, I think our recommendation would have been similar. So I think we though just wanted to reference what has been approved in the past to the same applicant for a very proximate building. But the grant requests are specific to 131, which is a completely separate property.
Chairman, I'll let some of them speak, and then I'll wait.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I'm pleased that we have people such as Renaissance II investing in our buildings. These types of investments continue to improve the architecture, the access to different types of structures, real estate, apartments, different types of things that draw people to the city of Sandusky, and in particular downtown Sandusky. I believe it was mentioned that the total funds grants is about 10% of the project. I think that is well worth the investment for what we're doing, we're trying to do here. So I support this legislation.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Just a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Hare and Renaissance II. I know you've definitely hit roadblock after roadblock, and you were in the building during the storm at 125, so thank you for all the work that you put in to helping the preservation of our buildings downtown.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
A question I, perhaps from Mr. Hare, or Mr. Lasco, or Mrs. Story, maybe any of the three of you know the answer to this. How long is that building set empty? My recollection is the last, the last viable operation, it was an Army-Navy surplus storm. Am I right with that?
The building in the Bimiller has been empty since early 1990s, which was the last time it was worked on, I believe, by Mr. De La Hunt.
Almost 30 years.
Yes.
Okay.
Just for the record, sir, would you identify yourself and your address?
I'm sorry, I'm Robert Hare, manager of Renaissance II LLC. I reside at 212 East Water Street, Sandusky.
So your group has taken on a building that has sat vacant, not providing any value to the city for 30 years, and you are bringing it back to life. That's what this economic development money is all about.
That's what we're trying to do.
And I would also like to point out, and I think Mr. Lasco will count on you backing me up with this, we're not doing anything for Mr. Hare and his group that we wouldn't do for anybody that made that kind of investment in the city. So this 10% is pretty standard, isn't it?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Brady. I think each deal's a little different, which I tried to mention at the beginning. We've done certainly the 10% from all projects applying through our substantial redevelopment program, has been somewhat the standard recommended by staff and ultimately approved by commission. The dispersment schedules have maybe varied a little bit between projects, some at the beginning, some in mid-construction, some at the end, so this is not atypical, although I do realize it comes with some concerns from certain folks. Certainly, the 10% threshold, something that's been fairly standard and the recommendation for the last couple of years.
Thank you. Thank you. Good, I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled that you're, that you're all in, and that you've stayed in despite the good Lord trying to drive you out.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. We're very, I'm very much supportive of working on these buildings. The $102,000, I should say not the 102, the payment before completion, I need a little better reason why we're doing that, not just that you think it would, it's okay. I listened to what you said, and it's not a justification. And this is why. First of all, I wasn't really aware- First of all, I wasn't really aware that you had been, had varied from the rules, which were, you need a building occupancy permit before any funds are dispersed. That is what has been the written, far as I was, I thought, was the way we did business here. The completion of the Market Street Building triggered giving them some money, which was fine, but the building was done. You've now stretched this to paying out money before we know we have anything, in the same light, at the same time, that we just, we've got the Cook Building sit, sitting empty. Disperse, investing in these projects is fine, but if the bank's not loaning you money for it, and on a million dollar project, in the middle of it at $50,000 is a break point that it can't go on, I'm not sure that if the bank's not interested in it, that the citizens should be jumping on board with that. So I'm very much in favor of the project, thank them for doing this. But simple, straightforward, good business says, we should not be sliding further and further away from protecting a citizen's money. That $50,000 that you're paying ahead of time, even if the project finishes up in the interim, that money should be spent on something that's improving the quality of life of the citizens. It is our money, so money sitting in their, their bank accounts. And as I look, we've got eight, I believe, six or eight people in this, six people in this organization. $50,000, which is the 55,000 bucks, is $8,000 apiece on a million dollar project, if they need, if they can't, I don't understand why you think they're going to run out of money halfway through, that we have to bend our rule on that. So I need to hear about why I should do that.
Through you, Mr. President, Commissioner Poole, and I can certainly respect Mr. Poole's comments. I think the staff thought, and ultimately the Economic Development Incentive Committee's thought, was twofold. One, whether the individuals have the money financially to do that, I can understand that question, but this is certainly a business decision in which each building is a separate business entity, and that business needs to be viable. So certainly saving $50,000 of what would be construction interest, if it were the bank loan coming in during construction, certainly is going to create some savings on what is a very tight construction budget for Mr. Hare and his partners. Secondarily, I would argue, at $50,000 dispersment, at that time, the city's already seen a $500,000 investment in the building, which at that point will have made it structurally stable enough to not have to be demolished potentially on the city's dime, which would have been a six-figure demolition, in our opinion. So I can certainly respect the disagreement. I think we felt half a million dollar investment for us to disperse $50,000 was a reasonable request.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
$50,000 at the middle of this project is not enough necessarily to kill the project. So I'm likely, I'm going to vote to do this for this one time, but let me, let's talk about this going further forward. The concept of folks starting projects, that it's doubtful whether they're going to survive in this environment with the economy changing, we need to be a little more particular about what we're approving. Let me suggest that at the beginning of this process, two and a half years ago, when we had nothing and no hope of folks investing here, putting out all this seed money was, was necessary, and I was full supporting of it. At some point in time, though, the citizens of Sandusky need, or should be able to count on, if this process that you presented us is working, that the market will take over, and people will be coming from out of town and all over, investing in Sandusky, because there's a market here for it, as opposed to us investing money with whoever will come by if we backstock their loans a little bit and take, take the risk. Because at the end of the day, all these buildings we're fixing up, at the end of the day, if they don't turn into viable projects, other than fixing the building, we will just have empty buildings that look nicer. And so I would ask that you consider going forward, looking at, some of these projects are going to need, especially the larger ones, like this is a large project. We can start talking about loans. I have no problem with low interest and payments start after the project's done and producing revenue. But the idea that the citizens have to wait to get their streets and things taken care of, because we're focusing millions of dollars in a small four-block area, that does not benefit the folks in this, out in the rest of the city. And personally, I believe that the solution for us involves what we're doing downtown, but more importantly, increasing the tax base. People have to move here, not stop in town for a beer once in a while and then head back to Michigan. That's not, we don't make enough, we don't generate enough revenue from folks passing through, off the sales tax to justify the kind of investment we're making. And I've been pretty supportive of what we've done up to now, but going forward, I will have a John to die and probably start, I'm going to vote yes for this, because I think it's a good project, and Mr. Hare's, I think will, I think will complete it, and that's the key. You're starting to do things that give indications that maybe this project's not, they may not work. Just one, I believe in Mr. Hare and his group, so I'll support, but going forward, you need to be, we need to have a tighter look at things, if you would. Thank you.
So two things before we call for vote, and anybody else has any comments or questions, I'll ask one more time. But I will be abstaining from participating on the discussion, in the discussion, or voting on items three through six, because the, my office building property is directly across the street from this property, which is what the Ethics Commission has said is a red line, yellow line, or whatever you want to call it. And then the other thing, during the, one of the questions, Mr. Wilpsir, maybe you can address this one. I think this came up at the last meeting as well, but because then we had recording problems, it might have been missed. But with respect to the Cook Building, it's my understanding that that was bifurcated, and there was $150,000 grant toward the marketplace at Cook. And the balance of that is due, would only be due from the completion of the Cook Building. So that money has not been outlaid, it is not at risk, and I just wonder if you could clarify that, please.
Through the commission president, to the commission and the audience, that's absolutely correct. The marketplace at the Cook has been completed and will receive, I don't believe it is yet to receive, but will receive the 150,000. The Cook will not receive any of the additional grant that was committed, which is 350,000, as you said, unless it is completed.
Thank you. Commissioners, additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I would just like to give Mr. Lasko one more opportunity to state what he already stated, and the fact that each of these projects are looked at on a case-by-case basis, so we're not just handing money out. So I don't want the folks at home or in the audience to, to feel like that's what our staff is doing. I feel like they're looking at every single project, and it, and we are to look at every single project as well. So it's not that we're just handing money out to Mr. Hare, and he has a great track record. He's been working on buildings since before I moved back. So I, for the, the completion rate that he's at, I think that we should all feel very comfortable giving, helping him meet his tight budget requirements. I don't know if you want one more opportunity?
Actually, Matt, if I, if I could, for a second, through the commission president, Commissioner Lloyd, and may I please supplement this in any way possible, I will say this, we look at every deal on its merits, and we also, we always start with the idea that we're hoping no grand dollars will be necessary. But a lot of these projects, particularly the ones that are rehabilitating older real estate, that we've already mentioned time and time again, the cost to us ends up being much greater in demolition costs, and then finally, taking properties in their permanency off of the tax rolls, that, these are really hard deals to do. It's the exact same reason that things like state historic tax credits, federal historic tax credits, the creation of opportunity zones for certain geographic area, new market tax credits, all of those state and federal programs exist for that very reason, that these are very tough deals with very low margins, and we are very fortunate to have on our team, under Director Lasko and staff like Director Story and Housing, or Specialist Story and Debbie Eversol in housing issues, people that have learned really well how to analyze pro formas, that includes the construction costs, but it also includes a pretty good idea of estimating what that real estate is going to be worth, whether it's leased to an entity or ultimately sold, or rented to an individual for an apartment. We understand what vacancy rates are in the downtown or the rest of the city. We understand what people are renting per square foot for, and all of that goes into negotiating these outcomes. We have found that when you're often piggybacking, and some of these projects are, and some of them aren't, with other available civic resources, that 10% has been that standard generally for some of those difficult renovation projects, but that doesn't mean that every deal will be 10%, or that every deal will be structured similarly. And then, and, you know, our hope is that eventually, we'll be able to either lower that amount, or ultimately look at areas of the city where the market is even further apart, because if, you know, people often ask, why are we investing downtown? Downtown's probably the only area where a 10% equity investment could actually make a deal work in most areas of the city. It still wouldn't be close to working, based on the cost of renovating some of those older structures. So I don't know if you want to add to that, but that's the general.
I would add, through you, Mr. President, where I strongly agree with Commissioner Poole, and we've seen this recently in some other cities throughout Ohio, I do hope we get to a point where our grand dollars are not necessary, and where potentially even in the future, tax abatement is not necessary. Candidly, the city of Cleveland, just over the last week or two, has looked at amending its tax abatement ordinance for removing the incentives for tax abatement on the near west side and downtown. What we know is unfortunately, our rents from a rent per square foot on the commercial side and rent per square foot on the residential side can't fill that gap that would justify a commercial loan to make unnecessary our funding. So I do agree, we reach a point, and I don't know when that is, where these buildings and projects do stand on their own, but this is part of the reason why we did a massive expansion of our historic district downtown, to allow state and federal resources to flow into these projects, to help further subsidize what the banks and the city cannot do. So I do agree, at some point, I hope we're out of the grant business in the future, and those resources are deployed in other forms or in other places.
And if I could, just through the commission president, supplement what Matt just said in relation to, just, the city of Cleveland, since the early 1990s, has had in place 100% 15-year tax abatements for all residential development. They're removing just a few census tracts potentially, but that was after 30 very difficult years, where many, many projects that wouldn't have not gone forward without that have helped stabilize and create a market. I think we're in the first few years of tax abatement within the city of Sandusky at that scale, or grant programs, and we are a much different market as far as where rents are. Rents today in downtown Sandusky are lower than they were during the recession in the neighborhood that I worked in previously, in Ohio City, but we're seeing similar climbing of those, and vacancy rates are climbing as well, and that's something that we'll continue to monitor on a year-by-year basis, project-by-project basis over time. But rebuilding cities is hard and takes decades to ultimately create the market that can then drive it. And the only worst thing, potentially, than putting these resources into these projects, is not putting these resources into these projects, and I think this community lived with the consequences of that for probably about 15 years before these programs were created.
Just correct me, Mr. Wilpsir, I think you said vacancy rights, rates are rising, I think you meant occupancy rates are rising.
Occupancy rates are rising, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
All the analysis and the problems that we have in, in putting these deals together, I, I understand that, and perhaps in the future, the, all the analysis and so forth that you took, talked about, if you'd send that to us with it, perhaps, I wouldn't have to ask, and I will, then I'll, then I may understand where, how you've arrived at the conclusions of how much money should be given and why then. Additionally, and I'm not discussing whether or not it's, whether it's, don't invest in, in our, in these buildings, or, it's not either or. It's a question of whether or not, whatever the project is before us, is going to have the impact that justifies the expenses, and that's real, and those are the kinds of questions I'm asking to get a feel for. So in the future, with all the figuring out that you do ahead of time before we meet, just send it to me, and I'll look at it and see, and perhaps agree with your conclusions ahead of time.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I want to thank Commissioner Lloyd for asking the city manager and Matt to expand. I'm part of the Economic Development Committee, and a lot of times, I think, as we're part of those committees, we see the work that goes on behind the scene, and sometimes that work isn't very evident when we're sitting here in a, in a commission meeting on Monday evening. So I do invite any commissioner to attend those meetings, to make contact with our staff. They do a pretty thorough job, and of course, everything is not going to work out 100% all of the time, but I do appreciate the due diligence of our staff, their ability to work with developers, to learn as much as they possibly can, and also bring the experience that they bring to the city of Sandusky. So I have great confidence in what they do, and I do, like I said, invite commissioners to attend those economic development meetings, because there is a lot of information shared in those meetings that may not necessarily be shared here, or in the documents that cover the, the agendas.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I'd like to thank Mr. Hare and the rest of the team for doing this project and the other projects. It's a, it's a worthy project to save these buildings downtown, especially this one, with so much damage on it. One of the things is, that I've noticed and heard from the community is, it's not the individual projects, it's the sum total of all the projects that they, that they worry about. So we can explain each, and I, and I think the staff has gone to explain individual projects, but the greater picture is what the community is looking at. What is their return on investment going to be? You know, down the road, what are we going to get from all these projects? You know, what will they actually receive? And I, and I think, in the future, the staff should explain that, that what is it that they actually expect? What are they going to get for their money, you know, down the road? So if we could get to that at some point and describe, I know the manager had talked about some of the things that are going on as far as vacancy rates and things, but perhaps somewhere in the future, we could explain, you know, if we've invested $100,000 into this particular project, or $200,000, you know, what is the return on investment for the taxpayer? What do we foresee in real foreseeable numbers? You know, will there be 15% more people living downtown? Will there be an increase in tax revenue? What will the people actually get for this? What do they get for their money? That's fair.
Additional questions or comments? If not, then Mrs. Crusher, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $102,500 through the substantial development grant program to Renaissance 2 LLC in relation to the property located at 131 East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Okay.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
This is simply an extension of the project that we've already decided we're going to commit to, so I don't have any additional questions for it. It's part and parcel of what's necessary to make this, make this successful. I would like to point out, it's, I appreciate being invited to come to meetings that occur during the day when all you folks are working. All the different committees that you have are not convenient for us to, for us as commissioners to show up to, so I, for one, need you to send the stuff to me. Sometimes I can attend, sometimes I can't.
Additional, Ms. Crusher, if a commissioner wanted to know when these various meetings are scheduled, is that, where, where would we look for that?
Mr. President, all of the board and commission meetings are on the city's online calendar, and they're also listed on the individual pages for each of the boards and commissions, with the meeting agendas and minutes.
Okay, I know you send us invitations to some, and Mr. Wilpsir mentioned some, in the city managers' report, planning commission, BZA, arts, I think, I don't know if there are any others, and I don't know how, what is, we select some and not others, but maybe, just maybe to Mr. Poole's point, maybe a little bit more communication rather than less on that would be something the commission would welcome.
Sure. And most of, Mr. President, most of the meetings are on a regular occurring basis each month, so, like for instance, Bayfront Corridor is always the first Thursday, 7:30 a.m., Audit Finance, I mean, they're all regular occurring, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I believe there was just one question that wasn't addressed. Mr. Shields had asked, why Section 14? I don't know if someone could address that.
Mr. Haver.
Yes, through you, Commissioner President. I mean, obviously, with any construction project, the cost of construction doesn't go down over 30 days, so obviously, the sooner, the better for construction cost. Not only that, we are talking about condemned buildings, so the sooner we can... Not only that, we are talking about condemned buildings, so the sooner we can alleviate the condemned properties, I think that's a clear emergency.
Additional questions or comments?
Just for clarification, because I agree with you. What you're saying then is that there's no bar to us doing this under Section 14, and so the fact that we've decided for the reasons you did, then it's, then it's legal and appropriate.
Correct.
I hope that answers your question. There's no bar to us doing this. So it's just, it's a judgment call whether you feel it should be under 14 or 13, but we're not doing anything inappropriate by deciding it's 14.
Additional questions or comments then? Mr. Crusher, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Renaissance Two LLC relating to property located at 131 East Market Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Crusher, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Renaissance Two LLC relating to property located at 125 East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just for the purpose of clarity, we have the, because of the enterprise zone, we have the right to do this 75% for 10 years, but just to be sure, for the public, the school board is well aware of this, that what we're doing, and are on board with what we're, with what we're going to do with allowing the tax abatements, correct?
Through the Commission President, Matt.
Oh, they've been notified and we're good.
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole's question, for clarification purposes, per revised code minimally, the city is required to provide 14 days notification to the treasurer and ultimately the board and CEO. So that notification has been made in this instance and in all prior instances. So they have two things. One, a 14-day period to make comment, where we can answer questions, but secondarily, we provide the date of the meeting upon which the legislation will be read for their participation if desired.
Thank you. That's all the technical information. What's important is that we are working with the board and they're, they're aware of what we're doing, and we're not just going past them. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Crusher, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the tenant to the Ohio Water Development Authority for the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Program application fee for the Pier Track Pump Station and Farwell Pump Station improvements projects, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Crusher, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Renaissance Two LLC relating to property located at 125 East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Crusher, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please.
Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Donald B. Eager and Associates LLC of Lancaster, Ohio, for professional services for the implementation of the city's Community Development Block Grant Fair Housing Program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mrs. Crusher, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And that completes our regular item of business. Mr. Wilksar, we turn the meeting over to you for your manager's report.
Thank you, Commission President Murray, fellow commissioners, audience and staff. I'll start with the donations. First, a $75 donation for the Sandusky Police Department, which was received from the Sandusky Memorial Day Association. I'd ask for a motion to accept.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Second, a $50 donation to the Fire Department Trust Fund from the Soloway family in memory of Tony L. Vanner. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Thank you. Thank you to the Erie County Solid Waste Management District for reimbursement of $8,500 paid by the city for a cost benefit analysis regarding long-term refuse and recycling collection within Sandusky and Perkins Township. I don't believe we need a motion for that one, but just wanted to make note of it. Unless, is that it?
I would just do a motion.
Do I, I'll do a motion to be safe, okay.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Solid Waste Management District.
And then finally, for donations that were received from the Sandusky Youth Commission fundraiser held at Lyons Park on June 29th. I had a chance to attend that fundraiser, and I commend the youth commission and the volunteers that helped them out on that day of, it was a really hot summer day in Lyons Park. Tim Schwanger for $20, Trevor Heiburger for $10, Yashica Brown for $25, Dave Waddington for $50, Kristy Eckley for $100, Portia McDaniel for $60, and then miscellaneous donations of $104. I'd ask for a collective motion to accept those donations.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks. That was really great that we were able to reschedule it. I know the first one got rained out, and I'm sorry I couldn't attend this one. We had a presentation at one of our commission meetings, and a really fine group of kids, and I'm sure that that project will be very successful.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilksar ate five hot dogs to my three. I bailed out.
I might have blacked out after.
Kenny, we know that.
Moving on to administration. The city of Sandusky will be hosting a public open house on Thursday, July 18th, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at our new downtown city hall at 240 Columbus Avenue. In addition, units in the Columbus Avenue lofts located at 285 Columbus Avenue will be open for tours. Please join us to see our beautiful new city hall location, historic downtown. I had a chance to see some of the apartments as well in the lobby, and for those of you walking by in Columbus Ave on your way out tonight, they did a really unique kind of historic restoration of the lobby of the apartments, which sits just north of our city hall entrance, so take a look at that. And we hope to see as many people as possible on the 18th. Also, Swan Song, a film written by Sandusky native, Todd Stevens, is going to be utilizing the old city hall for filming, and will be filming at numerous locations around the city for the next several weeks, so please stay tuned. Also, Sandusky Fire has been busy with community events, including the Special Olympics Parade, visiting sports, forced to play catch with kids, playing in the shuffleboard tournament at Viewpoint Apartments, and delivering lunches to the Recreation Department's Playground Program. And fire stations at Station Three have adopted Farwell Park and are working on a daily basis to keep it free from trash. And firefighters also participated in the Green Dusky Grillout by making a makeshift sprinkler for the kids at Lyons Park. Thank you, Chief, and the Fire Department for your great work. For Finance Department, actually, we already have that, and donations for public works. The underwater installation of plugs and associated pumping has been a success at First Street. The water on First, Wildman, Farwell, and Second Streets receded and roads reopened before the holiday. A special thanks to sewer and street crews who have been working very hard, often overnight, to make this possible. And we know we had a flare-up due to wind just yesterday, and so these are certainly evolving conditions, but I do want to commend Director Klein and all of his team, who have been really busting their humps, trying to solve that issue, which has been very complicated and historically unprecedented. In addition to that, the Erie County Emergency Management Association submitted an application to the Ohio EMA for public assistance for possible infrastructure damage at various locations throughout Erie County due to the ongoing flooding of streets and parks. The extent of damage is not readily apparent, may not be known for a while, but it is great to see ECMA making that effort on behalf of, again, what is an unprecedented, almost a natural disaster that has struck the Great Lakes this year. Community development, the former Keller property case development recently was approved by Planning Commission for a revised development plan that calls for the new construction of 13 townhouses and carriage houses. The project called Water Street Lofts is anticipated to break ground in August with the commencement of utility works and site work. Staff is currently in the process of reviewing utility and site drawings for that project. Moving on to the Planning Department, the next Walk Wayne, hike Hancock event will be held on July 10th from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Also, the city is applying a second time for the build grant to help the Sandusky Bay Pathway. This is a federal grant request for funding to construct the remaining portions of the pathway not already built or part of an upcoming project. The budget is not yet finalized, but based on last year's submission, the city will be applying for approximately $14 million. If awarded, there will be a 25, there's no local match required, but the city has agreed to participate at more than 25%, which can be met through the downtown and Battery Park TIF funds, as well as the Landing TIF and capital fund dedicated towards the Sandusky Bay Pathway. These are the funds that have been communicated previously as sources for pathway construction. This application is due on July 15. Also, at the Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission's June meeting, they voted to approve the Lang Trust of the Sandusky Library's request to renew the Sculpture on Loan Program for a second year. These sculptures are on loan for one year from the Midwest Sculpture Initiative and are available for purchase. And then also, the regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled on Wednesday, July 24th at 4:30 p.m. at 240 Columbus Ave in the City Commission Chamber. The regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 18th at 4:30 p.m. at 240 Columbus Ave in the City Commission Chambers. The regular Landmark Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 17th at 4:30 p.m. at 240 Columbus Ave in the City Commission Chambers. And the regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting is also scheduled Tuesday, July 16th at 5:00 p.m. at 240 Columbus Avenue, I believe, in the commission chambers as well. And that concludes my remarks for this evening.
The Walk Wayne, I've got two different times for that, 5:30 and 5:00.
You know, 5:30.
5:30, okay, so it's two hours, 5:30 to 5:30.
That's what I have here. That's what I have here.
And then, it wasn't in your report, but Mr. Cresser, I think there is, isn't there a walking program and tour of the City Hall on next Monday, or is that still on? It postponed?
Yes, I believe that's a Metro Parks event.
Right.
I don't recall, I think it starts at, I believe it starts at 6:00 p.m.
I'll pull it up, I have it on my calendar. Give me just one second.
It's their monthly walk.
That's the 15th?
Yeah, I hear it is the 15th from 6, the walk is from 6:30 to 7:30, but I think it's preceded by a tour of the City Hall. I didn't know if that was still.
I thought the tour was in the middle of it.
I have a 6:30 p.m., it says meet at Battery Park Marina, walk to the new City Hall, and give tour with you, Commissioner President Murray.
Okay, I better get a key.
I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments for the City Manager? I know that some folks were disappointed that First Street was flooded again, but Mr. Klein explained that was water backing up all the way from Venetian Marina on the First Street, and there's nothing in the world we're going to be able to do to stop that. There isn't a pump out there big enough. What's there additional questions or comments? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I talked with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief prior to tonight's meeting, and I've had, in my neighborhood, several residents there, and then out and about talking with folks. Is there something we can do with the fireworks? Because not only, we have vets, retired vets, and that noise really bothers them, you know, upsets them. And then animals, if you have pets, it's a nightmare. And then also like nesting birds, or you know, just wildlife in particular. It sounds like civil war going off, you know, sitting in my house. I mean, and I've talked to several other residents about this. Is there some way that we could say at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, it's done? You know, and I know we got, I know they can make some arrests and that, but with the noise, but is there something we could look at maybe for next year and try to change this up, change, do something, you know, different? Out of respect to our residents.
Chief, I know you doubled the staff on duty at that hour, but it was still a pretty big issue, I think probably just about every neighborhood throughout the community. Any additional thoughts about what might be done other than what we're doing?
Yeah, the fourth is pretty challenging to enforce because it's all over town. After the fourth, we've been correcting the staff that if we find anybody that's discharging fireworks, that we'll make arrests, so we have been doing that. Just encourage folks to call us if they're continuing to do it. Seems like they start a little bit before the fourth, and then it'll subside generally in the next, should be subsiding. But I would just encourage folks to call us now at this point, and you know, we'll try to take appropriate action. We had a difficult night on the fourth, and so we're assessing that, and Chief Wilcox and I are going to try to come up with some new ideas next year because it has become increasingly problematic in certain areas of town.
Mr. Chairman.
Cool.
Just a question, I didn't know, is it the state or is the city, do we issue a permit to Cedar Point and various other entities that legally set off fireworks? Is that something we do, or is that through the state?
Well, yes.
We've done fireworks on the pier in the past.
Yes, Commissioner President, Commissioner Poole, yes, we give those permits out for people who put in for those specialized fireworks displays, but anything else beyond that, as far as some things and complaints that the citizens have, are just people randomly just setting them off in the middle of the neighborhood, so.
Okay, thanks.
Additional questions or comments for the City Manager? I'm sorry, we're on new business, excuse me. I got the order backwards.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I was recently approached by a resident of the Hubbard Building regarding the frustrations that they feel over the parking issue that they have. We have parking dedicated for those people, and yet they're frustrated because the spaces are being grabbed by other people. Is there, is there something that we can do to put some, maybe this is a question for Mr. Haber, is there some teeth that we can put into signage, either through threatening to tow or fine, or, I'm just trying to keep the peace down there, but I understand their frustration.
So I talked with Mr. Whoopsir about this, and the thought was very similar to the one that you mentioned, Mr. Brady, in terms of having some more aggressive signage there. And I went by on, I think I was, it was there, I was there Friday or Saturday, or which day it was, to look at those particular spaces, and the signage is, you know, not as aggressive as it needs to be. I think it does need to say, you know, "Call here if your vehicle's towed," and that will, that will help. But I think of the spaces I saw there, I saw two cars from Michigan and one from Wisconsin, and I'm pretty sure they're not residents, so.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, it's a real issue.
And through, Reverend, through the Commissioner President, through the Commissioner Turner, please jump in with any legal enforcement. I don't think there's any reason why we can't do more aggressive signing, particularly to let them know, right now it is a complaint-driven enforcement strategy, because this has come up on the on-street parking, which would have helped to fund the need to have an officer or some type of enforcement agent out there looking. The court decision that allowed for no chalking has kind of blown up the plans going into the spring, and that happened at the last minute. I know we met as recently as a week or two ago with Planning, who's overseeing parking management, as well as Chief Orzek and other relevant departments, to try to come up with a strategy to address that. And what we really want to enforce for this season is just making sure that residents or anyone else, and I think signage is a great way to do that, know exactly who to call if someone is in violation on-street or off-street of a parking rule. And Chief has stated, and we did talk about this at the public meeting at the fire station last Friday, I guess a week, almost two Fridays, or two Fridays ago, I should say, that we will respond very quickly when those calls are made. But I think whatever we can do online, or through signage, or through other mechanisms, to let people know what to start, we're also monitoring as much as we can throughout the week and on the weekends. And we do think that as soon as we get through this season, there are steps that we can be made so that we'll have overcome in some ways with whatever strategy is best after we talk with our residents, our merchants, et cetera, what the right plan is for the downtown heading into the next busy season, next spring. But we did think we had a plan in place this year, and ultimately, you know, make a plan and things happen, and the Sixth Circuit decision did throw that out of whack, and we are very sympathetic to the challenges being faced by the residents, and we'll do what we can to enforce this year and have a better plan in place going into the future. And we apologize for the inconveniences that all of you are facing.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I think verbiage is really important on the signage and to deter our visitors to not use those spaces, I think towing and permit. So if it's resident permit parking, they'll realize that there's something that they're looking for, then it's not on their car. Also, with our, not all residents, downtown residents are going to have a permit, so we are still utilizing those for that. Also, when the permits are handed out, I think it would be very beneficial. The meeting that we had was great, a lot of good questions and good presentation, but having a residential parking map, knowing where those spots are, when they get the permit, they get the map, so they can, they know exactly where they're able to park and maybe have reserved spots.
Through the Commissioner President, Commissioner Lloyd, I think those are all great suggestions, and I know some of those even came up at that meeting, and we said we'd follow up on that, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was Walker.
The other black guy.
Yeah, definitely. So, Mr. Chairman.
He did.
The hole's short.
Yeah.
They go. Mr. Chairman, I don't know that it's, you know, we created a parking problem, and now we want to put the hammer on the residents and the folks that are parking. You know, I think it's kind of soon to kind of be so strict and stringent on people when we have a parking issue. The Cook Building is taking up a number of spaces, the pier is taking up a number of spaces, and now we want to put the screws to the people because they're trying to find places to park. Now, granted, I sympathize with the businesses and the people that live downtown for their spaces, but I don't know if this is the right time to do that. I think we should be looking for a solution to our parking problems. Some of the folks at the courthouse, the Court of Common Police, were suggesting that they utilize the same parking mechanisms that we use for Bike Week. And they said that would alleviate a lot of things for their juries that are looking for spaces to park in their overflow, so maybe we can consider other ideas for parking. I don't know, I guess the Chief might know more about that parking, temporary parking that we get from there, but why don't we look at more ideas about the parking that we've taken away and how we can increase parking rather than, you know, putting the screws to people who may not even know. You know, a tourist comes here and parks, you know, they're just getting the short end of the stick, and they don't know. They're just simply looking for a place to park because they're going to the island or what have you. So what do we have by way of making a plan for that?
I've shared my thoughts, so I'm not going to repeat them. I think better signage is what, and enforcement's what's necessary, but.
Signage, you're saying signage alleviates our parking problems?
For those, for the residents who have raised that issue, I think better signage would go a long way in addressing that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Cool.
My thoughts sadly are that we're stuck in a loop. Two years ago, we knew that we were going to come to this point, and the mantra at the time for all the things that we did that led to this problem was that we have plenty of parking and there's no problem. Well, at this point in time, we have made promises that I don't believe we'll ever be able to keep. There's no way in the world with the volume of traffic that you can promise space to be available, people who live downtown, that it be there unless you have the capacity to support the various constituencies that need to park down here. We have the building owners, we have deliveries, we have folks that work down here, we have their customers, and you have people that live here. Those are all different constituencies that come at various and different times, and if you do not have, and that's why mall parking lots are so big, you can talk about it as a waste of space and say it's a poor use of the space and so forth, but at the end of the day, we can't, I do not believe, from my experience, that you folks who live here are going to have a parking space available to you whenever you want it because there's too much demand. We've reduced the capacity to control the demand, and so that's how it's going to turn out. And we can talk about this forever, and I'm really sorry, but it's not going to, you can only put so many parking spaces, so many cars in so many parking spaces at any given moment. We just made promises we couldn't keep, is what I believe, and I'm saddened by that because it was avoidable.
Well, I completely disagree respectfully. We've talked about this before, parking can be managed. Communities that are far denser than ours manage their parking. That's a matter of being smart about it, but we're just going to have to part company at that particular point because otherwise we're just going to be arguing about it. We do need to schedule a public hearing for August 12th for vacation of a 10-foot alley for three properties along First Street, and if someone would care to make that motion, I would appreciate it.
Second.
The motion is second, discussion. No objection, motion be approved, and here we know objection, the motion is approved, and the hearing is set. We had, we have a vacancy on the Landmark Commission, and we had a number of very fine applicants. I know Mrs. Cresser sent those out to everyone after consulting with the Chair of the Landmark Commission and just discussing what other, Landmark Commission is a little bit unusual. It has some legislation that's encouraged by the state that requires that there should be certain skills that be included on the Landmark Commission, and the Chairman of the Landmark Commission suggested that the gap in the skills would best be filled by appointing Franklin Nagel to the Landmark Commission, and I would like to make that a motion. If someone would care to second that, I would appreciate it.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment is made. Other items of new business before we turn to old business, which I've got in the wrong order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Maybe Mr. Brady might be able to help me out. Any updates on the recycling? I go out to the West End once in a while at the complex. Seems like it's staying fairly clean, or we're not getting couches and tires and...
I will ask Stuart, I think our last discussion on this was we had, we had agreed to spend about $2,000 in installing a camera system to kind of monitor what's going on out there. And with as hectic as things have been with Stuart moving City Hall, I gave him a dispensation on getting that accomplished in the next 30 days, but I think it'll be, I think it'll happen very soon.
Additional items of new business? Any items of old business? Then we will turn it to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on any matter of city business, please step to the microphone, use your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, representing Friends of the Jackson Street Pier this evening. Noticed that some work has begun today, presumably on the utilities, but with zero work being done the last five months, we called our group back together again, we had a meeting, and we decided to come down and once again share our concerns with the City Commission. This evening, we have a few members of our group and some additional members that are concerned about the direction that Jackson Street Pier is going. As a reminder to Commission, when this project was in its infancy, the cost of this project was going to be between $4 and $7 million with 100% funding through the Chesapeake Lofts, and now we're finding that it's an $8.1 million project with a whole bunch of different funding sources, including some CDBG money, some donations, some foundation donation money, and water and sewer funds. Taking you back to January 21st, 2017, Commissioner Waddington, I apologize, I'm not picking on you, but you were quoted in the Sandusky Register, "We look forward to hearing what improvements the community wants to see at the Jackson Street Pier." The community showed up in probably the most highly numbers ever on any one given project. Most of the commissioners were there at the State Theater meetings. Then again, in June of 2018, more than a year later, Friends of the Jackson Street Pier contracted with attorneys to try to help mediate between the Friends of Jackson Street Pier and the Commission, a better plan for the Jackson Street Pier, and this is pretty much what you're seeing right here at this time. We met with the City Manager and staff, we met with Mr. Whoopsir, and at that time, City Attorney Harris, and again, the plan you're seeing here is what we came up with. And to kind of explain this a little bit, what you're seeing here is one-third less green space than what Commission approved. You're seeing no pole barn, you're seeing no 3,200-square-foot pole barn down here in a corner, you're seeing the maintenance or maintaining of the food vendor area, and you're also seeing approximately 27 more additional parking places at the North End. Which brings us to today and the five-month delay. We understand that the water levels are at record levels. We understand that in 2017, we should have known that those levels were increasing. In 2017 and 18, when we took core samples, we should have known that the water table was just a few feet down below the Jackson Street Pier's surface. We should have caught all this stuff. If we would have caught it at that time, we wouldn't have a five-month delay. As a reminder, the BGSU Plan Project, which was not even mentioned at the time of the Jackson Street Pier Project, is taking away an additional, give or take, 130 parking places, on top of which you've taken away from the Jackson Street Pier. Now, if we follow the bicentennial plan like we've been doing, you're going to be looking at additional parking places on a two-block area of Columbus Avenue. The bicentennial plan calls for the elimination of angled parking and replacing that with parallel parking. You're going to lose about 30 to 40% of your parking if we follow that bicentennial plan. We're here to say that there is a way to create a better Jackson Street Pier plan of the above-ground part. We understand that the utility work's already started, the design's already there, we're already starting on that, but from what we understand, the above-ground design has not been completed yet, and it's time to negotiate this plan through change orders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger.
Greetings, Tom LaMaca, 20648 Street. I was at the Commission meeting last week, or two weeks ago, when we were introduced to the new facility. It's a beautiful building, but I mention again that this, the folks, their back to the audience, it's difficult to hear what they're saying. They apparently don't have microphones, so perhaps we can get it redesigned, spend a couple dollars. Instead of giving out more grants, let's reinvest in the new City Hall so that this is more welcoming to the folks and the audience. And it's really muffled when Mr. Lasko speaks or Mr. Klein speaks, so if you could help us out with that. And some of the commissioners don't tend to speak to the microphone, they speak away from it and back up, and so again, that hurts the people at home listening to the program on television. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LaMaca. I know it's a lot better temperature-wise in here, and I understand we've made some adjustments to the sound system. Is, I didn't look, there are no speakers there in front of, are there speakers there? They're just flat, are the flat speakers? Okay. How's the sound in back?
Not good.
Still needs to be amplified.
I've got a boost of the microphone, so.
Yeah, okay, we might need another speaker.
And some people speak so quickly when they're reading a presentation that you can't understand a word they're saying because of the volume, because of the speed, because of the, and we're here to hear. We're not just here to complain and talk, we're here to hear what's going on.
Okay, good, well, I appreciate the feedback, and I think that it's a work in progress, and it looks like we need to make some additional adjustments, so thank you for the feedback. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I just want to mention a couple of things here. We talked about the ED, Economic Development Meeting. These meetings are open to the public. If anybody wants to sit in on these, where they give grants out, free money. I've been trying to talk with staff several times, I have approached them to put the Economic Development Meeting on the city calendar. You have to notify people 24 hours ahead of time before the meeting, and these are not on the calendar. They used to be on, and all of a sudden, they disappeared off the calendar. So I'm hoping that this will get corrected, and I think I mentioned that to you, too. Also, I wanted to comment on the Cedar Point cameras. Oh, I like that. Get closer to this microphone. You guys got to get closer, see? Okay. Cedar Point cameras. I watched this at home, and I saw some flaws in this. When I lived, I live on Fifth Street, so we've done a couple things on Fifth Street. And when we've requested things on that street, we had to have documentation, we had to have the data to back up what we wanted to do on that street. We also had to have a petition signed by most of the neighbors down there that they were okay with what they wanted to do down there. And I didn't see any of that evidence when Mr. Murray was talking about Cedar Point cameras. This is on a private road. We don't even know if the Ohio Revised Code will allow that on a private road. Now, I did see a couple other things here. I saw a possible conflict of interest, and I have written a city solicitor on this, conflict of interest with two commissioners who live over at Cedar Point. And they're probably homeowner association members. Now, on the financial disclosure, they ask whether or not you're affiliated with associations. So, you know, why ask that if that's not a conflict of interest? So, I think you need to look into that. One of the commissioners lives right on Cedar Point roadway that is going to, that improvement on that road will affect his valuation of his home. Also, I'm not sure if there's been a violation of the open meetings law because I understand there was an email by the mayor, wrote to all the commissioners and some of the staff that he wanted to give a heads up, that he was going to bring this speed camera subject to the table. He also asked if they had any answers, if they had any questions, he would answer them. I'm having a problem with that. It's an open meetings violation, I would think. You don't give heads up, you discuss this stuff at this table, no other place. Email is very easy to discuss it in email. Email is very easy to discuss it in email. My next thing here is, I'd like to know what the city has provided for these employees who are supposed to be parking wherever. They're not supposed to be in prime spots, so I'd like to know what arrangements these employees, where are they supposed to be parking? Hello, Mr. Whoopsir?
Say that one more time, please.
The question that Mrs. Johnson is asking Mr. Whoopsir is, and you had addressed this in an email that was sent out to all of the employees, and I think you copied the Commission on that, I remember that correctly, in terms of where the employees are permitted to park, so that they're not taking up the spaces on Columbus Avenue, and so maybe you could address that, please.
Do you like me to address that?
Yes, you want me to?
Okay. Through the Commission President to Mrs. Johnson, we did send an email and...
Can you speak up, please? Right into your microphone.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now?
No.
Is it better?
It's a little better.
I'm going to speak directly, does this help?
There you go.
There you go. Thank you, guys. I really do want you to be able to hear me, I apologize. We sent an email to staff, directing staff to park in off-street lots, and then gave them a map that showed all of the off-street lots that are available, including the county's parking garage and the several publicly-owned parking lots throughout the city. We also have, everyone has to sign similar to, say, a dress code policy, that they will follow the policy or be subject to disciplinary progressive discipline, just like if you showed up late to work or violated the dress code, and we don't believe there's any reason to think that that's not being followed, and if we hear anything other than that, we'll look into anything more detailed, but I have not, and honestly, I know there are some challenges directly on Water Street and occasionally in the Jackson Street parking lot, but there are not on Columbus Avenue on this block where the parking garage, I've been monitoring it every day since we've been here, there's been very many vacancies in that garage, and we actually had someone from Senator Portman's office that visited with myself and Angie Byington today, and she said this is one of the few cities she's visited where she had no problem finding parking, and we actually walked the block of Water Street between Jackson and Columbus at approximately, what, 3:30 PM, and there were like six empty spaces on the street at that time. So we are monitoring this really closely and ultimately taking it very seriously, and we know that there are probably times where you are having a hard time finding parking, but I can tell you, we are looking at multiple ways of managing the issue, and we will continue to adjust what we're doing to make sure that parking is available, including keeping staff off the street, but I would urge you, if you don't believe us, go count the spaces in the parking garage at any time of the day, during the week or in the evening, and there are scores of spaces empty sitting in that parking lot. And today, for most of the day, on the west side of Columbus Avenue, it's that virtually empty of parking.
I have a problem with the employees in the parking garage, I guess, because that is the closest between, you know, the county building and the city building where most of the business is being conducted, and you're saying these employees are on the honor system. I suggest that each employee registers their automobile, their make, and their license plate with personnel, and have a sticker on the back end of their bumper so we can tell who's violating.
And through the Commission President, I responded to your email saying thank you for your comment. I pass it on to the HR Department, and we'll take it into consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
One second, please. I wish to address a question that Mrs....
Oh, sure.
That Mrs. Johnson raised. If I had a conflict, Mrs. Johnson, I would not have forwarded the request that came from the Cedar Point Property Owners Association. That wasn't something I initiated. There's a set of meeting minutes that they forwarded that indicates that that is what the Board of Trustees asked for. It is what Cedar Point itself has asked for, and the test is whether I have a direct and substantial personal benefit. I don't, and so I'm satisfied with that. And I sent the email out, it's public record, you're free to request it if you like, perhaps you already have.
I have.
As a heads-up to the Commission so they didn't get caught off-guard. There were no responses, there was no discussion of that, and so, you know, the open meeting violation would be if there was discussion going back and forth on that. I did invite people to contact me if they had any questions for clarification. There's nothing improper about that, so...
So you're not a spokesman for the homeowners?
I am not.
You weren't?
I am not.
Okay.
Ms. Poole.
First of all, can we buy a proper microphone for the manager? I mean, the bomb, holding a hockey puck is, I mean, I hope we can afford to do this appropriately.
I think we need...
And if we find out, incidentally, we had a problem last meeting with the sound system that we think is recovered, that we think has been recovered. Can you hear me at this level?
Can you hear me?
You can? Okay, fine.
It's a public speaker, so you can't hear.
Okay, I'll try and speak. I don't like, okay. At any rate, we think this, we hope that you'll be able to hear the staff, and after this meeting, we'll know, and appreciated it, we get the proper microphone if those hockey pucks are not working this week, for obviously, it's not working inside, because the manager has one. Next, the ED Committee, it's not on the calendar. Is there any reason that, do I need to make a motion to have committee meetings put on our calendar? I'm asking whoever, staff, you?
I don't think we need to have a motion. We just need to ask Kelly to make sure those meetings are on the calendar.
Whoever does that, I recognize that Kelly doesn't, isn't the secretary for every committee, but somehow or another, people need access to be able to put this on here. Additionally, as we get into this employee parking, as it seems to be getting more complicated, I would ask the Law Director, do we have some case law that allows us to tell people they can't park on city park streets? We're good to go, we're not, we can discipline them, okay?
Through you, Commission President, Commissioner Poole. Yes, the City Manager can direct his staff to park wherever he chooses, and in this case, I think there'd be plenty of justification for being able to do that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be sure we're good, because generally, can't tell people they can't park in front of your house. It's a city street, we all have access. I just want to be sure we're not looking at future litigation.
And in fact, we had one at the old one, too. There was an old parking policy at the old City Hall.
Thank you.
Ms. Platt, you've been waiting patiently.
Marcy Platt, 1217 Columbus Avenue. I happen to live two blocks away from Hancock Street. I was very disappointed when I read the dispatch report of people with sought-off guns, people standing outside of flash drive-through with guns. It's a public document, correct? So anybody can access that on the internet. In my neighborhood, it's terrible on July 4th, but I've already expressed that a number of times. I know for Bike Week, I believe the Sandusky Police handle Washington Street North. I believe that Highway Patrol handles south of Washington Street for the most part. We, people, we need to get a handle on this. This is awful. I mean, if you were looking at where you wanted to come into a community and you drove anywhere near July 4th in the center of this city, I don't think you would buy anything here. People were throwing them out of cars. Three days later, I walked by Campbell Street in approximately the 1400-1500 block, and you can still smell powder. I know that the police department added some presence to it. I also saw on the log where Firelands Hospital had to call Sandusky Police and make sure the area is going to be clear for them to put a life light down. That starts to question our safety as a community. So, like we approach Bike Week, just because we're not going to make any money off July 4th, is there any way somebody could put a group of people together within the community? Mr. Lockhart, I know that you're very involved with Hancock Street. You know, we all know what's going to happen there. I saw a video on Facebook, I'm sure I'm not alone, of the 400 blocks of Perry Street, and it is set up with a professional fireworks display, and went on for a long time, and there are children all around it with stuff being launched. My other question is about the parking. I came down here Saturday around 1:30 to go to the farmer's market and to go to Mr. Smith's. When I went by the farmer's market, didn't look like much there, I understand it's the beginning of the year, and there's no place to park around it, and it looks like it's set in a really awful spot. So I said, "The heck with that, we'll move on." Whether you know it or not, mulvins, when they're open, you drive right to the front of it, and you get your produce, you put it in your car, you figure out a way to get out of it without hitting another car, and away you go. So I thought, well, I'll go down to Mr. Smith's coffee shop. There were no spots in front of that, and I said, "The heck with this, I'm driving out of town. I'm going out to Perkins." As I was driving down Shoreline Line just to see what's going on, there was a young gentleman, he's probably in his 30s, he had some real, real nice new luggage, plunking all around. I saw lots of people walking distances, and the first thing that hit me is, you took that parking away from people. You said you would have, I don't care how much you open up, for all that you want to do to bring additional business down, you've got no spot to put the parking now, let alone when they do it, because I would assume on Shoreline Drive, I would hope you're going to allow business owners to park behind their businesses and do things like that, and of course, there's going to be loading zones and things like that. Unless you're planning on getting rid of the Jet Express, why would I even go down here and fight for parking when I can go over either Catawba, Marblehead, wherever, Port Clinton, and there's much better parking situations for me, and let's say I had three little kids, to go over and spend my money on the islands, come back. Let's say I want a burger, I'm eating that over in Port Clinton, I'm not stopping at one of the places in Sandusky to eat. My other examination is, this was not a natural disaster, Mr. Whoopsir, with the water. This is a 20-year cycle. When I was 17 years old, I worked over at Cedar Point, they had to close Cedar Point because there was so much water that the turnstiles, it was where the turnstiles were at. I had a geology professor my junior year of college, she worked for Cedar Point. First thing she said to us when we walked in was, "Never build on a flood plain, and if you do, you better be rich because you're going to spend all your money maintaining it or preventing it from being flooded." I don't understand why the people who have been here a while didn't discuss some of the stuff that the planning has gone on with flooding. We're all aware, every 20 years, we're going to have a flood in this area. They've written about it in The Plain Dealer, then we see it about five, seven days later in the Register, almost the verbatim article. I was just reading The Plain Dealer, where they, they're putting some housing right on the lake. It's 274 units, and they're putting 500 parking spots. Now, a young group of people may think it's a wonderful thing to walk to get everywhere, but that's not reality. We have vehicles, we use vehicles, we haul things in vehicles. I'm not hauling my luggage on my bike to go down, to get on Kelly's Island, to get on the Jet Express and leave. So if the idea is to get the pier people away, to get those from coming in, you're going to do that. Because like I said, I saw these people hauling their luggage, and I thought, "You're nuts. I'd go somewhere else to get on it." So, we were all, we were nuts. There was not a parking problem. And I know, Mr. Whoopsir, you're saying now that, oh, yep, for this year, there's going to be one. If this develops like you want it to, I agree with Mr. Poole, there's always going to be a parking problem. And how can you expect people to pay $1,000 in rent and not have a parking spot when on July 4th, they're going to drive through a war zone? So if somebody could come up with a, I mean, we're not, I get a kick out of this because we are not competing with Chicago or these other places. We're competing with Perkins Township, we're competing with Huron. How many people sat there with their dogs not being able to do anything? We just got over Bike Week, where nobody can control the noise of that, and who sits there and says, "I think this would be a better place than Perkins or Huron," as their neighbor who can't afford, because we have got no new jobs coming in, other than part-time jobs coming in? So, and I had asked a long time ago if you guys could do something about a jobs report where we could at least report if we brought any full-time jobs into the area, and we either haven't, or you guys aren't interested in furnishing that to the citizens of Sandusky. I don't know what the deal is. I would think that would be a really great thing for you guys to be able to say, "We brought 50 full-time jobs in. We got 100 full-time jobs in. Pay benefits, pay all that kind of thing." But I've not seen anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Platt.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Mrs. Platt's point, I did address the situation over Hancock and the fireworks in our last meeting, and today, you heard the Chiefs, Police and Fire, said they're going to come up with a plan for that area. I did get a lot of calls that night and prior to that about arrests and other things going on over in Hancock. The fireworks are gone way too far, and it's been increasingly a bad problem over there. So I'm looking forward to see what the Chiefs are going to come up with as far as a plan, and I'm sure they're going to let us and the residents know what they're going to come up with to kind of quell what's been happening on the 4th of July, so I do agree with you, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we're going to do about it.
Yes, sir.
Nicholas McGookey, 1422 Ogon Street. We've been talking about Jackson Street, the parking, Pier and the parking. All that parking has been removed, and then our Dalmatown parking is at a luxury. This hasn't even come with the brand-new apartments that we're adding at the BGSU campus, housing, what we just said, we're building three more apartments on Market Street with a grant, and then I'm also wondering about Battery Park. We're all worried about Jackson Street Pier. What's going on with Battery Park? I've seen about 10.6 acres listed for maybe possible convention center hotel office space within the Battery Park, Damon's area. I'm wondering when that master plan's going to come out, see what's happening with that. Thank you.
Additional questions, or additional, anyone else wishing to address? Well, someone else getting up, ma'am? I think you're going to have to figure out, look it out.
Do we have any answers for his question?
That's one of my questions.
We've talked about the BGSU parking situation, so I'm not going to try and address it.
No, I meant Battery Park.
I told you all that we are here to hear, but you are too. The problem is, in communication, it's a two-way situation, and we don't get the answers. And I appreciate someone saying, "Wait, are we going to answer those questions?" Because you don't. Some of the first times tonight, I've heard some answers, but not enough. Besides that, Port Clinton has a much nicer access to a beach than we do. Free. I was just thinking of that. I have a question. A lot of the projects that are going on right now, I read where it's part of the Sewer and Water Fund. Funds are coming from the Sewer and Water Fund. Funds are coming from the Sewer and Water Fund. Who gives the permission to use the Sewer and Water Fund when we have the problem with our streets flooding, we have sewers that aren't working? Adrian Circle, we had to go round and round, I think, with Mr. Klein, and Mr. Whoopsir helped us back then to get, there's one sewer place on the end of Adrian Circle, one, on the whole street, and I think down at the end of Cleveland Road, there's a sewer drain. But we had to fight to get our old sewer drain back in because the new one they put in, my husband would be out there in the rainstorm cleaning the sewer off. So who, my question is, who allows our Sewer and Water Funds to be spent on projects that have nothing to do with our sewer and water? And, you know, what, the other thing is, and I'm going to say it, Jackson Street Pier, we begged you. You heard us, but we, you heard, but you weren't listening, because we didn't want that taken away from us. Those of us who've lived here 74, 77, 78 years, that was our place, and now you're going to put this grandiose attraction, destination down there, and what have we got? What do we get? Like Mr. Poole said, what do they get for their money? We're getting nothing, nothing, from everything that this new Sandusky is providing for visitors. We have Cedar Point, we have Forest Sports Park, and God only knows what that other attraction is going to be, but they'll be parking out there, but not here in our city, not in our area. We pay your salaries. We pay your salaries. We pay our taxes. If we don't, you come and knock on the door and say, "We're closed. You don't pay the rent, you don't pay your mortgage, we're going to, you've got to pay your taxes." Well, by God, we do. And you all are not, all of you, not all of you, are not listening to the people. And it's time, I can tell you, I know you're all checking Facebook. Well, keep checking. What did they say? Somebody said to Mr. Whipser, "Be afraid or be...
Hey, heed."
Hey, heed, because the people are listening to what this commission is doing, and they're going to surprise you when you least expect it at the voting booth. So, don't be too sure that you'll be sitting there and making these decisions for us and not listening and not hearing us.
To answer the particular question about the use of Sewer and Water Funds, I can assure you that both the Law Director and Mr. Klein make certain that every single one of those dollars that come out of the Sewer and Water Funds are spent on Sewer and Water. Those are not diverted to anything else.
Then why does it say on these projects?
Is there sewer and water involved in many of these large projects?
Well, let the people who are doing the projects pay for that. When I built my house, we built our house in Arizona.
I was just attempting to answer your question, ma'am.
But when we built our house in Arizona, we had to pay to have the water put in. We did. It's homeowners.
These are public improvements, but okay.
Well, that's your opinion, but when I hear Shoreline Drive Project, May Street Project, Jackson Street Pier Project, the eight-point-something million that they're spending in Sewer and Water, you better make that clear to the residents darn quickly. Because we see our, my bill went from $38 to $83. Why? Boy, boy, boy. I hate, I hate when old people used to say this, but we're on a fixed income. Oh, compare taxes and you do both.
Anyone, anyone else?
My question's going to be answered.
Question and answer session. It's not what the time is for.
So, to be clear, this is a public comment section. This is not an interrogation session. We do answer, we're going to let the other, this lady speak, ma'am.
Susie Wise, 105 West Water Street. Marcy, to answer your question, I believe, about jobs, our city manager was quoted in the Cleveland Plain Dealer a few weeks ago as saying, "There's a new model about that now, that if you make it a place to work and play, that people will move here and bring their jobs with them." So I have a millennial female family member that visits once a year from out of state in the summer, and she said, "What's going on around here?" I said, "Well, you know, we're driving down Cleveland Road." I said, "Well, it's not every day that you can buy 200-plus acres of prime property, but you know, Cedar Fair knows what they're doing, and thank God, they're in this community and bringing a lot of tourism here and notoriety, and reinvesting their money in multiple ways." We drive past Sports Forest Park, the parking lot is totally packed, they're overflow parking. I said, "They're bringing in people, they're bringing in money." And, "Look at that giant new building they're just building." She's like, "Wow, yeah, that's something." I said, "$50 million," and you know, every time I drive by, there's always construction people there working, because that's private money, and they know how to manage private money, and they know how to manage money. And when they start a project, they know exactly what they're going to do, they know how much it's going to cost. You should, you would not believe the amount of steel that went in there and the amount of stuff. "How much did that cost?" "I heard $50 million or so." "Yeah, cool." We drive downtown, and they say, "Wow, that's a really cool redo of the new city, you know, offices." And I said, "Yeah." You know, I toured that church a few years ago on the Christmas tour of homes. You would not believe the inside of it, you know, and thank God, somebody saved it. It's covered in Italian marble, it's beautiful. And they saved the buildings right next to it, you know, they may have, it may only be the facade and some of the structure, but you know, that was a good save. And who else would have done that except maybe some public money? And we drive down the street, and she says, "Oh, my God, what is going on with that Cook Building?" And I said, "Well, you know, I'm really concerned about that because two years ago, a former city fire chief of Sandusky said, 'You know that? I'm really glad something's going to happen with that building because it either needs to be redone or torn down because it's a no-go.'" I said, "What do you mean by that?" He said, "Well, if a fire starts in it, it is so structurally unsound that we can't send any firemen in, and we can only fight it from the outside, and the entire city block will burn if it starts to burn at all. So one of the two things needs to happen, and soon." So, I'm looking at that building, and I'm like, "Well, it looks a lot less safe right now than it has in the past." Not, not only have we taken all that parking around it, but there's plywood on the doors. And we saw what happened, you know, at Maui Sands. People like to go in abandoned buildings like that and do whatever they want, and if there's anything of value, they take it. And if they would happen to start a fire, we know what's going to happen. So I wonder how secure that is. And I said, "You know," and we saw pictures tonight of what happens with straight-line winds of about 80 to 100 miles an hour when we have boarded-up windows on a building. But I counted them, we have 32 plastic-covered window openings on that building. What do you, you know, you'd think we would have learned a lesson that maybe that's not a good idea to leave those like that, because if the top blows off that, or it collapses, you know, how, what's going to happen there? I said, "And you know, nothing's gone on there in six weeks, because reportedly, it's structurally unsound, and the city had to stop the work. Why'd they start the work if they didn't know that it was going to be stabilized and done?" And I'm like, "You got me, but I think a big red X needs to go on it, and it needs to be demolished tomorrow, or somebody needs to actually structurally fix it." So then we drive around, and she said, "Well, how did your parking, you know, turn, turn out?" I'm like, "Well, they made themselves feel good. They put out a really cool parking brochure, they put a sign up that said, 'We're going to enforce parking starting May 6th.' And then they held a meeting about two weeks ago and said, 'We'll,' you know, it's a complaint base. So now they want us residents to, to report parking violations because they haven't hired anybody to do parking enforcement, like they said they were going to. And they want to take regular officers away from the gun and riot problem to enforce parking. So I can understand, you know, I feel bad if we call about parking because they got a lot more important things to do, and thank God, they do their job well." And so shortly after the parking meeting, I said, "This is how it went for me. Friday, June 28, the entire lot's full. I called at 6:00 PM to notify police of six parking violations in resident parking spots in Jackson Street Parking Lot. Dispatch said an officer would be sent. At 9:30 that day, no cars had been ticketed. So my husband, Matt, called police again to report that no cars had been ticketed, and dispatch stated that officers couldn't tell which cars were residents. And so we said, "Well, you know, you guys did issue those green parking stickers that said, 'We're residents,' but there were a couple tags that said Cedar Point Residence. And what does residence-only parking mean? Residents of the total city? Residents of the county? Residents of the state? Residents of where?" So I can see how that could, you know, they could, you know, not know. So the next day, Saturday, June 29.
Could you, could you begin to wrap up your remarks, please?
I called again to report six cars parked there with no ticketing. Now, I don't want to get arrested, so please tell me if I'm about to get arrested before.
You're not about to get arrested. You have gone beyond your time.
So the dispatch, the next day, said that there wasn't much the officers could do because of poor signage. So I reported it, like I was instructed to report it. Tonight, I've been told again to report it, but I'm not calling anybody because you guys don't really mean any of it. You've made yourself feel good by designating those as residence spots, but you don't, you don't really mean it. And, you know, there isn't, there isn't enough parking, and there's not going to be enough parking. And, you know, it's demoralizing. Because the people who invested here, and who have been living here for years, and who had the foresight to be the first ones here, you really don't care about us and our parking and our life.
Anyone else present who wishes to address the commission?
Thompson, 105 West Water Street, Hubbard Building. Pardon? I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my neighbor that lives next door to me. There's one handicap parking space in that entire block. Thank God they're not here tonight, or I wouldn't have done this. They're both handicapped, and you ain't going to use it. They won't be able to use that handicap parking space because it's, there's cars from all over parking in that without a handicap sticker. And Susie's correct. You haven't hurt us. I bought into that building 10 years ago, and I've been talking to Mr. Poole for several years about the parking, and I agree with him. You really don't care. You really don't. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Pat Earhart, 105 West Water. My first question's on Jackson Street Pier, and I don't expect a specific answer tonight, but I think that the citizens of this city, they deserve to have a detailed plan, to see it in writing, you know, a two-page summary that says, "This is defined as Phase 1. It involves this infrastructure, or this tearing up of these sidewalks, or whatever. This is Phase 2. We start this, we lay this pipe, we do this, we fix some underground utilities. It starts on this date, it ends on this date. Then Phase 3 starts on this date, which involves, I don't know, pouring concrete or pouring pavement or growing grass, whatever. And Phase 5 starts on this date and ends on this date. And what are the, you know, the details? What are the milestones that the developers are, are being managed to? What timeline are they being held to? We, we deserve that. And I guess the only other thing I'll say, but I know it doesn't matter because that ship sailed probably, but how that thing, maybe you can explain it in that detail, is how can that thing cost $8 million? I mean, that is a huge sum of money, of public money. Okay. I would say that, I'm going to talk about parking. It's a big issue. I drove around the city today, too. You're right, I drove around the county building. I was counting spaces. The whole upstairs was full, or I mean, open, the roof. Monday at 3 o'clock is a huge difference between today at this time or whatever, and then Friday and Saturday. And of course, we have events and we have things going on. So we can't really compare, you know, today to that. I would, I see you investing money, grant money in businesses. I think what we're doing to those buildings down there is great. I love this building. Bathroom's cool. It's really great. Looks a lot better than the other building. But I would like to see you invest in downtown residents and select maybe three areas of parking lots that are dispersed, you know, nicely or whatever, and take a section of a parking lot and gate it, and say, "This is residence-only." And then the residents are issued a card, and it's just like, you know, you, for us to get in there, you have to have a card issued by the city that opens the gate. That is the only way the residents will have parking, because nobody will follow the rules. They will wait to get towed. I've had people say to, they asked me, "How much is a parking ticket?" I said, "15 bucks." I said, "Damn, that's worth it to me. I mean, that's cheap parking," you know. So, so in the same way that you invest in all these businesses, prove to the residents, please, that you really do care about us a little bit, especially the ones that have been here for all these years, and we haven't ran away, and I don't plan to run away. But yeah, I mean, we can figure this out. I really think we can. I mean, I think we can. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earhart.
I'm here to close the show. Okay. We've been talking about the pier. Now, the newspaper tomorrow, oh, Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. The newspaper tomorrow will say, "A loud and vocal minority remained opposed and even suggest a recent slowdown in construction at the pier after unforeseen problems with the plan." That's what they're going to say, because they don't write anything new. That was on May 7. Yet, on May 4th and 5th, the newspaper wrote, "During the last few weeks, both above-ground and underground work has halted due to unforeseen climate conditions, Public Works, Aaron Klein said." So, that's what we were told. We don't know if we're supposed to believe the newspaper or the truth. Jackson Street Pier is always going to be a controversy, since you had Mr. Chester here and paid him a lot of money to convince us that this is a good idea, and then you decided to do a design and build, which, who knows what we're going to get now. A lot of people are still very concerned about this, as we can see here. It's not a minority, it's a lot of people. Like the previous newspaper stated that this is dividing the city. There's high water, there's a lot of storms, there's waves coming up over the end of the pier. That's what we go down there for. We can't even get to it now. And someone made a remark at the hospital the other day, "Well, why don't you go down to Shoreline Park and watch here, watch the water? You go stand at the end of Chesapeake Lofts, at the northeast corner, and look at what you see standing down there, and then go down to Lyons Park, and you can see the difference. There's a huge difference. That's why people like that pier." And between here and Cleveland and Toledo, you don't get a lot of places like that where you can sit in your car and enjoy it. Just sit and enjoy it. I don't understand why you want to put an $8 million concert venue goose farm down there. You could put a beautiful concert venue on the west, or the east side of Washington Park. You move the gazebo to Columbus Avenue, tuck it in the corner, face it northeast. There's maybe three trees would have to come down. You put the portable bowlers across Washington and across Washington Row, food trucks down Washington Row, and you make the gazebo oval, make it bigger, and you've got a concert venue. And people can walk from their neighborhoods right down there, they can lay down a blanket, they can sit under a tree. They're not going to have goose poop to have to sit in. They're not going to have the wind and the rain and everything else that comes off of that. Well, I guess if it's going to rain, it's going to rain anywhere, but the wind is not going to be hammering them like that. And it's practically the same size, if not bigger. And it's beautiful there. It's just, it just amazes me that this is going on and on and on. And like I said, I know you're going to say, "We've considered everybody," but there is so much that we don't know now. Move that building to the middle of the pier, up by the road, put your festival hookups. Instead of putting them at the north end, put them along Shoreline Drive with everybody else, where all the other ones are going to be. And that way, the, hopefully, the building won't get swamped. You can still have parties down there and stuff. But if you want a huge concert venue, put it up here where it's going to be comfortable to have it. I drove by the splash pad here on a couple of days. It was running constantly. It was running when it was raining the other day, and I know Lyons Park wasn't, so I don't know if there's, that hasn't been switched over, or it needs to be fixed. Fireworks? I parked at Maritime Museum Parking Lot, and there was fireworks going on two blocks behind the Maritime Museum for an hour. They were going on, then Cedar Point did theirs, and then we continued to watch the one- They were going on, then Cedar Point did theirs, and then we continued to watch the ones behind for a solid hour. They were up in the air, you could see them everywhere. I drove down a couple of streets and cut back in toward town, and there wasn't any fireworks in the sky again. What looked like to me, and my father used to set off fireworks, it looked like something had fallen over because when I drove down, I looked down the street, and there were fireworks going everywhere, all over down the street. And then they got back up again. So I don't know what was going on there, but that was a solid hour of fireworks, and I don't know how long it lasted after I left. We're talking about people not paying attention to signs on parking. I was at the lunchbox having lunch one day, and a car pulled in, and there was that sign that says, five-minute parking for pickup. And the car pulled in, and these people get out, and they get their little kid out, and they get a wagon out of the back of their van, and the guy brings my food in. I said, I don't think they're coming in. And he goes, no, I don't think they are. And they went down the road, and when I finished my lunch, I went down Shoreline, and they went all the way down to Shoreline Park. But they parked up in a five-minute parking space, even though Lunchbox said they didn't actually put that sign up and they didn't use it. But that was just, nobody pays attention to signs. The handicap spots, the last plan I saw for Shoreline Drive, there was handicap, the first handicap spots on the south side of Shoreline were going to be on the other side of Wayne. There weren't going to be any in front of Jackson Street Pier, they were going to be all the way down. That was going to be the first park, the first handicap spots. So that doesn't seem fair or right or anything else. I saw, I thought it was in the news on Channel 5 a couple of weeks ago that they're talking about putting temporary, because it's just, it's experiment, speed cameras in Ohio City. That's interesting. I understand giving the money to this builder with this property out here. I love those buildings. I love those buildings because I moved here, and they were empty back in the 90s. I just hope, and knock on wood, that they don't, that with all his work he's putting in there, they don't just fall down anyways. I think it's terrible what's happened to the Cook Building. I think H2 should, I know they can't, but I think they should be reimbursed half of the money they gave to the guy that took their money and laughed all the way to the bank because that building is a disaster. And you could see it from the street. I don't know if there were, there're supposed to be inspections. Should have seen a lot of this stuff that they're dealing with now. In the hubbub on Facebook during Ohio Bike Week, I've said it before, you don't have enough trash cans downtown. If you had enough trash cans, nobody would have been having a fit. When you're having thousands of people come into town, you have got to request by these organizers, you want two trash cans on every intersection, catty corner from each other, so whenever you cross that street, you're passing a trash can. Two trash cans down each street, on each side of the street to the next block, three blocks out from the city, middle of town. Because people get halfway to their car, and they don't want to drink that great big old drink that they just bought. They get halfway to the car, and now they've got, they've eaten their elephant ear, and they've got a paper plate full of powdered sugar. It's going to go under somebody's car, it's going to go in somebody's bushes, it's going to go into a doorway of a store. If you've been to a festival, if you've been to Cedar Point, you see how they do it. It's the way people are, you just have to accommodate. Some people are lazy. Other than that, this has been a very interesting meeting. It's, oh, there was something else. They're talking about the Fragmites. I would just saw a thing on TV of Mentor Marsh, how they, I just caught the end of the program, and they eliminated all the Fragmites in their Mentor Marsh. So I don't know if someone could check and see.
They burned them.
Talk to them, how they did it. They just reclaimed a whole lot of area, 32 acres or something. So I just hope that, in the small islands he was talking about, to control Shore, when that starts getting done, could someone see how it works? And maybe you could do that on Lyons Park. Build something like that where it could build up, the sand could wash in and build up and create a beach instead of just eat it up all the time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Oh, go ahead, you can see.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Before we get out, I'm just trying to remember all these things. Is it possible that we could get a presentation on Jackson Street Pier so that people know what's out there now? It's pretty clear that we've, generally, we have no one at a meeting, and now we have a room full of people who have some concerns about communication and lack of knowledge of what's going on, and concerns about whether or not we're listening to them. So one productive thing that came from that, then maybe if we get a presentation to bring them, bring everyone up to date on Jackson Street Pier, and then ultimately Shoreline Drive and any other major projects we have, so people have a general idea where we're actually taking them.
Mr. Klein, is that some, normally, there is a bar chart that shows, you know, what, what different things are going to happen at different points in time. Is that something that you think, once the plans are a little bit more, I don't know, I don't know what state they're in right now, but is that something you could bring to the commission at some point in the near future? Okay.
People, yeah, people are going to want to know what, what's it going to look like? You've been design, plan, design, building, changing for some time. So it's not just a, a time sequence of what's going on, but communicating what they're actually going to end up with.
I think an update would be welcome, all up here. Anything else? Someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Stand adjourned.